Good evening. Welcome to the City of Arco. Thanks to City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty four. Beginning at six oh one P M. At Arco's City Hall. Located at one three two two two, hallway six, Arco's tax office, seven seven five eight three. For the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arco has reserved the right to meet in full session on tangible items to be utilized in applicable pursuant to authorization. By Title V, Chapter five sixty one of the Texas Government Code. I now call the meetings of order. Six oh two P M. And now that we have a forum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Brad Achor. Followed by the flag of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tim. Everything under.
Dear Lawrence, thank you for leading us all there at this station tonight. Uh, you know that there's a lot of people that are hurting badly because of the storm. Please come into their hearts and bless them with any help that they need to recover and things go on with their lives. And do the same to.
My present even have. From the United States of America and to the Republic where we can stand. One nation under God, in a little bit of the middle of the universe, to the world.
My first time we will have a roll call. Councilmember Evelyn Dunn, here. Councilmember Brad Achor.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, every state's old president. Councilmember Rosemary Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Lawrence Johnson, here. Also President is Justin Pruitt, our city attorney. Henry C. Moreno, City Secretary. Frederick Edwards, I keep website for names. And Dr. Ned Goldberg, City Attorney. At this time. We will have public comments. At this time, quickly to desire to address the council with comments on the general events that may do so for periods limited to three months. I have a secretary here, and I think he's going to come. Yes, I know there are. The first thing we have is. Useless assailant. Um, you will have the ready made. You know, it's pretty much.
I was looking at the agenda. I had no feeling. About the law because I thought I'm gonna get it. There's been mentioned about ten days ago. Between there, T T S running and time. And they were going to spend with some kind of. Either, and I see how to receive it. This meter was approved by the real administration. I would like to know whether it was ever on this thing because it keeps driving and dragging and that. Only answer on that.
Thank you. Because we haven't. Oh, we have any more comments on us, we don't. No, I'm pretty sure. Now we will have, um, comments. Quickly desire to address some of the comments regarding matters on the Santa Rosa agenda, maybe so at this time, fortunately, it's limited to three months. If there, where we had this great base person, he didn't speak about like in the eye of the camera.
They all have on the dinner again tonight that, uh. Going into the day session to the rest of them. Still want to agree that you all, uh, want to pay those individuals' turn. I still believe that cities do other things that money, we have spending bills, so I tell you, you walk. Or you spend that kind of money doing. What you've been planning on doing, paying this attorney, like storms up there. That a lot of things this city can use that much for. You know, I mean, we can sit up there and throw money and give money away to everybody else. Except for people that need. Water, clean up around the city if needed. The county did not come there and do anything. And city only like this, but a whole lot of it being a dumping. And all kind of other. Uh, lawbreaking violence behind this storm. Last thing is, uh. Franco's, uh, problem law, he did the dream contract. And it'll be good if the city will reach out to the citizens and provide during the cleanup. In the city, so that what he do all day, every day. So you start putting, putting money around people that don't. Living in the city of Austin, city tax bill money. That's why people live here, that pay the taxes. I'm a taxpayer, but. I know that it can be a lot of other things that could be done. With the money you're offering on it. Give it. I'm not going to even tell you to pay it. I'm gonna say give it to an outside attorney. I get it, it's behind me, but at the end of the day, it's not the city's fault, really. To pay for that individual, those individuals' attorney. It's not right. You all know it. You know it's not right, it's not right. But again, another day. Do the right thing by citizen. You know, like they say, on far code, from our code. Forward, do the right thing. Don't pay that money. It doesn't count. I don't care. City will pay you six hundred dollars. Don't knock it. It's the front part, not democracy, front part. And that does make it right. You gotta put up there and keep putting this on their junk. Man, need water. And after, feel through, got to be relevant. You don't want to get this man. That's going to generate some of that tax bill money that you paying out to this attorney. Rather than he doing, it pay tax dollars. And you invest the money, it's not going to bring nothing back to us, you know? Up there in the crazy, we look out the long look, but at the end of the day, that's not right. So. Go on this council, this mayor, this administrator. We all deserve to be, people deserve to be, all of that, meaning family. Program, that can be all of that. And nobody will. Thank you very much. I was gonna do every last one of this.
At this time. So now, as we now, this town vote will now go into the hold of the best in setting. As under, as authorized under section five five twenty, number one of the best government code for the purpose of compensation, compensation within your time. Please, now, to, to, to. This time is now seven oh three, the city council will now leave the name of the regular session on the item. Come on. Bring away, okay. So we will not, we will not read the name with no action on. At this time, we will have city council comments. Uh, notice to be here by giving in court from sections five five one one zero four one five of the Texas Government Code. City Council of the City of Arco, they received an report. About items of community interest from city staff and or members of the council. But no action possible, actions have been taken and discussed regarding the subject of such report, except for provided by section five hour one point zero four two of the Texas Government Code. Councilmembers Evelyn Dunn, here.
Thank you so much. Tell me that I, I hope that you can use the power into something to clean up with all of the cities. And then we can use some of the done, free hands up.
Councilmember Achor.
No comment, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim, I don't. Uh, from David.
Uh, I've been told again that, uh, the people, because it's a lot of. Fraktion, all kinds of stuff, you know? Means we have to pick, pick it up and whatever and. And I'm sure they need water and whatever, so I, you know, that's my whole thing. I just say, we. We're on it.
Councilmember Jeff.
No.
Well, I would just like to say that, um. You know, I know that this hurricane barrel came through here and, uh, literally had it through our city. Thanks to she, she was roaming around the city yesterday and was able to see. Uh, all the areas that were flooded and trees that were down and fences and stuff that were down. So, uh, which is why, and, and the city lost power and we got power late yesterday evening. Which is why I made the decision to close City Hall today. We knew that today was going to be a heated rivalry. Uh, we had a heated rivalry for residents and, uh, so what we did was open the. Uh, City Hall for residents who wanted to come in because they didn't have power. They could come in here and pull, um, heating, uh. Cook food and stuff and we said something to keep that thing in. Also, we did deliver some water on yesterday to one of the residents who had been flooded in. And asked, and we called to him to make sure that they had a meeting with leaders. And he was on twenty-four hour, uh, watch and they were up here. Sleeping on, on the paramedics to, to respond to anything that anybody named in the city, so. Uh, so I know some people are concerned that we didn't have City Hall open today when we were here with, uh, residents. And trying to help with it, however. Yeah, I think, I think we thank you, Justin, and we did, um. Uh, have a disaster declaration submitted, uh. Uh, provided by, by our city attorney. And it was posted on website and. You know, people who have, uh. Need to follow families and stuff like that, we're always trying to work with FEMA and we'll use the footage, what the other needs in terms of resource, to give them the help. To do those things will help them to be. So please pass that on to anybody who we know in the neighborhood that may need their help. But thank you, that's all. At this time, we will move on forward to our defense again. I, since this agenda. How consistent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council. And will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. And which he then. The items will be removed from the present agenda and considered in his normal sequence on the agenda. Item five A, consideration of. And active on improvement of units of the regular meeting during twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. For Edward, this is secretary. Item five B, discussion, consideration of and possible action on a donation of subjects. In the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars from Philly Lewis. And Association C, E, M, C. For the back to back tag program. Police Chief Carl Bryant. Item number five C. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on a donation of subjects in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars from New Hall. Textile for this for the back to school backpack program. Police Chief Carl Bryant. And I want to pay your notes into this, but since the items, uh, A, B, and C.
Then since the item with A, B, and C.
Who has been named by Councilmember Davis, certified by Mayor Pro Tim, Santos, all in favor. Uh, all those. Not to be told. President Santos, please. Six A, twenty twenty three, annual police report, Police Chief Carl Bryant. Please. Uh, I just want to give a little update, we'll just apply my report on, um. The hurricane in Statister Avenue, are working, working down in Roland Bridge, um, to come out. And there is some of the roadways, we did have public work done today, some of the. People from the city and the businesses are out today, sweeping the streets, clearing the streets, so that, uh, certainly can have access. Um, all the roadways, uh, the clear of flooding, except for Honey Road. I think it's the only street that's still underwater, anything, anything else has it seen. Um, but we are working, working, and soon we get a connection with FEMA. Red Park and all that information will focus our, um, basically, also be on the website. And if you call City Hall, they'll have that. I'm not going to go through this entire report, but we're just coming along, I'm just going to get on some feedback, because the other thing in twenty twenty three, because it's going to be twenty twenty three, so. Have not got the chance to give this report, um. Earlier, I knew this. Um, so we did have an increase in time in our time rate. Um, crimes against persons, we've got homicide rate, that we. Those increased by a solid of sixty degrees percent. Uh, we have twenty seven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, we have solid thirty three. Um. Crimes against property, these are pretty big, when you have, um, death. Um, quad, and there is, and so many, and we can give a lot of, I've been eighty-five. The people are using, using, thinking everything from our code and others, say. I'm not sure why, but it's happening, um, that increased thirty seven percent. Um, over the last year. Um, as whole, time rate increased. Um, based on items, with items to the national database that we report to every year, as whole, a way to find and facilitate. Like this. Um, so we did have a. Thing, we think, overall, um. That's going to happen, we could ignore, we have a lot of, um, different people, some of them are doing different things, some of them are doing public time, kind of something. And that could be, um, especially in the city. Um, if you can look at the uniform control, obviously, activity, um, in twenty twenty two, the soldier number, uh, at. A citizen even, we've been in with officer, we've been, um, practicing, I think, this morning, uh, all the good, that is on the rest. The twenty twenty two, we just woke up in two hundred and thirty-five. And twenty twenty three, we did increase to twenty two thousand five hundred and thirty-five. So our control division, um. They worked hard last year, um, as you all know, we did, um, see a total of thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Which we already won, uh, this division, the N L State, to see what that means for the. I mean. Warren. Uh, I believe he selected the little over four thousand, um. Four thousand, like three hundred, um, one side there, it's five and nine, but. Um, that he collected on the ones, um, that we have. I mean, we, we did a lot of, um. Community service events, we haven't done it, we're working on that. Um, due for officers going, uh, we're the other year with obviously our fear. Uh, I'm also the chief officer, we obviously got your opinion, we have officers, we did something, um, depending. Some of our community service committees have been, being over that, you know? Um, because that type of, you all said that things still were, and so those things will continue to be, as I said, as long as we need a lot of things that are, that are good. And that is any, any of it. Sixty, January to July, Fire Marshal's report. Fire Marshal, Ethan A. R.
Good evening, Council. Good evening. Okay, um, the Fire Marshal's, um, program itself still kind of in its place, um. It's still, when it catches a pole, it's, it was, um, he's careful and stuff like that. And, uh, when you first involved in this, um. You know, we get a dedication out to, to fit, to fit. We want to be a shock to them. And there's no fear before the county gets all, all those services, and now we don't go back to the city. So, and, uh, I'll give you questions, something from the city, stuff like that. They just want to know, because they're really staying, and not, not going forward in the county. They're large, and, you know, they just really don't have no time to be personal with, with the community, and business owners and stuff like that, so. I really had a good opportunity during fourth of July, uh, we, you know, speaking to people in person. And they got a better understanding of how things going. So as we move forward, uh, getting out there, uh, the only way it's going to be, it's happening, it's new going, basically, like, you're getting to, off the period, like. Uh, education and stuff like that, and we can, you know, uh, find it to a kind of profit, but we haven't played. But the thing though, what we were doing, um. Some of those kind of toll, tolls, and those, uh, electoral, uh, activities that was going on, but, um. Things that we just had to do, some of these, and stuff like that, came out to drill a plan to be, um, there's total of eight, uh, three residents, two thousand dollars. Uh, special in the bar, they commit, little issue, one thousand seventy-five dollars. So grant over nineteen, um, um, expenses in, uh, for, uh, total of three dollars, seventy-five dollars. Um, we come over and over, uh, total of sixty-six visitors. Which I have a special idea, um, just a question that, it's different. And the service fee schedule, um, being reported, some may have a sanity, some of them may have a duty, you know, to go to kind of pop things that have them. So there's no calculation for sixty-six visitors, going to be in different months. Part of it, as an annual special event point, I'll put it for a thousand, each of those sixty-six visitors. It'll go up very still, more than, every year, there's just about total, they go all the afternoon, especially, um. And every as I go off, it goes into, if things change, possibly things, probably things, uh, normally might stay same, uh, even if my bill, my policy from, or if it might be one. So, uh, everyone will be known, so I need to get in there, uh, see what kind of topics they have, what things, I suppose, still getting them. Get some charges, uh, get names known, and stuff like that, and we move forward the process. Uh, along the way, the education part, putting on the heat, um, stuff like that, for the county, there's still how it's all, uh, the, uh, they are good. So, uh, I like to, first of all, you know, talk to people and stuff like that. Now, I think that way it's going to be real fine, you know, to talk to their guys, and play in the process, to be. And, um, I know we got a little, I can explain to you, uh, what kind of follow children, so that we have a place. Where we need to have a real understanding of what actually, like, there's a question, you know, evolved, or the business goes, and stuff like that. So, so we're all recording, so, um, well, they will, and by my head of city councilmen, who have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixty, June twenty twenty four permit, monthly report, uh, future Garrett Kermit Harris.
Good afternoon, ladies, um, please, Council. Uh, so I'm here to report the, uh, month, uh, for June, uh, twenty twenty three. And the number of companies that, uh, we issued without the company's department. Um, so we issued one driveway permit. AC rental permit, one game permit, two field bear permit. Seven bywords permit, one food shop permit, family capital permit. One, one day Buddha permit, three penivens, one crack permit. Eighteen five minutes, three byway permit. One roof permit, and twenty-nine waters, you would that. For total of one hundred and fifty-five, currently stored in the month of June, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions for me? Thank you. Not moving the regular, if not.
Seven, regular agenda items. Seven A, request consideration of and possible action on the May twenty twenty four financial report, Ruthie Cable, Finance Service.
So Mayor and Council, uh, Ruthie was unable to be with us tonight. But she has met with each of you on the night of May for financial. And if you have any questions, please talk to me now, but, um, then have to show, I'll let you know.
Um. Thank you. Well, that can have anything on our motion, uh, through, through, May twenty twenty four, financial report.
I'm glad you were, to, to, uh, May twenty four, twenty twenty four, financial report, understand.
Also, there's a name by, Mayor Pro Tim, Santos, Senator, um, Evelyn Dunn, all in favor.
All right.
Oh, oh. Okay.
Seven D, discuss the consideration of and possible action on the June twenty twenty four municipal operations and consulting. M O C report, including an update on the city's birth party for the city of Arco. John Montgomery, M O C operator.
Good evening, Council, um, John Montgomery, is, is wasn't able to come today, he'll be out for a few months, so he probably isn't sending me here. Um, I'll just give you a little update on our hurricane barrel. My name is Roland Bigout. Um, I think a little update on Hurricane Barrel, on what the M O C did, we, we were out at eight o'clock P M. Starting Sunday. Um, we had an operator in place to add the water plant. In field, uh, the, um, pile, this is towards, uh, we still been doing our daily operations, so some of the guys. Are still out because our anger one forty-one, too, could be powered five o'clock, there on the calls, and still without power, they're certainly cleaning it up, around me. Around there, they're still out, so some of these guys still are out there and having a day. Um, I'm moving forward with the operators report. Um, we're looking at filling periods from May twentieth to June twentieth. Your water connection control was eight hundred and seventy-nine. With eighteen twenty, eighteen hundred and twenty-five being sewer connections. Just below, we're looking at your balance pump, which was six million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons. And five million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand gallons were built, which put us at ninety-three percent accountability. Due to radical looking at the water sewer accounts for the lead plants, there's eighty-seven of those, and sewer only account at sixty-four. Just below your revenue total was a hundred and sixteen thousand, sixteen dollars and ninety cents. And just below that is your wastewater retrieval plant, it was, had been sampled in, in compliance, and was running good. We did have four inches of ninety-five old range hood. And your plant was off the field, time was operating at forty-nine percent, uh, from any type. Can be turned to pay. Or if you spoke to, to the next, so, pointing after your daily sewer plant, I'll go. Uh, I'll go over what is highlighted, which is your total gallons. Um, if you look, all, all the gallons that was put in for each day, it's again our daily average. Um, you did not go over and to the right. You'll see your final C O two. This is your book, so the plant was red when they took their residual. All of them are in compliance above and below what it was the maximum minimum. And to the right is your fresh water one, what they push in under gallons. And their totals um, for the day. Down below, we'll look at the total gallons that we planned to for this billing period is ten million, two hundred and ninety five thousand. Your permitted were six hundred and seventy five thousand as your daily average. We were at three hundred and thirty two with ninety seven. It once again put us at that forty nine percent permitted accountability. To the far right is what that fresh water one provided. They could, they gave us three million, eight hundred and ninety six thousand of eight hundred. Which their daily average was one hundred and twenty five thousand gallons of seven oh three. And that puts them with their doing at thirty seven point eight five of the development rate. Do you turn your table or scroll down? So looking at global samples at the plant. I don't know if y'all have yet. Okay, um. When we're just, you're looking at your, you're looking at global sample at the plant. I'll briefly go with some of those um, go connect your dissolved box, the benzene, the four of those plants um, for bacteria to work. We're below the minimum at six point three one. And if we go down, I'll give you the P A, we would go there at seventy three two, you're solid, whole suspended solid. We were at a seven point four eight, which is below the eighty four daily average. And below your N H three, which is your own money, we had good numbers, we're point seven one in time. We will once, once again below the our average. And um, your flow in the treatment plant is playing three, three, two, oh nine seven, we can blow that point six point seven average. Do you turn your page? First scroll down, um. We're looking at the uh, four year old reserve, once again, the low of the one point two one, which was above the one point oh. And our high was three point six nine, which is below the four point oh, those are all for T Z three, five, three, and ten years. Your high, um, your equal value is good, that's a good number of one point oh, so we're below that one point six. Um, you're solid and with that twenty four fifty for your average, that's a good number. But if you go solid, that's low. Your V O D was seven point seven, you're not going to be below that. So that's all I have for you on the operators for the twenty two as well. As far as um, anything that was out going. I s- I don't, I mean, just got the whole folder, couple days ago, um, you. I haven't had a chance to get all that, but I stand to within that, I'd be caught up to where it needs to be done with. What um, what was the amount I do is be somewhat of a thing if it wants to tell you. I may have. If it didn't done what we need to do.
But Mayor, if you recall, you wanted an update and all of the pending work orders, so we'll get together, we'll actually get that. Okay.
Thank you. Um, when does the power there in store in one time?
The water plant that was broke through you, I'll say right, around six, six, I think, on the day.
Yes, and was it running on backup?
It was on a generator power.
But that worked fine.
Yes, we had no issue, the plant stayed running, we never had a problem with it.
But did our wastewater treatment plant have any problem with the high range? We had some of the.
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't have any issues after wastewater plant as well. It handled everything. Uh, we did take a higher flow because there is I N I, which that's something I think. You, y'all have been discussing about some of that, I think, about the I N I. But um, but it did take some of that. Our lift stations handled real well, um. The lift station A, the new generator, we monitor that, um, we're gonna leave the running instead of. Who are you?
If we have any residents, you know, and through a backup in that house, we bring.
We did not get any calls that I, I was aware of, I was in the area, they would have phoned me, I didn't get any calls.
As far as the water, I mean, we're interconnected with, you know, uh, the quarter one, I mean, like one forty one. When they lose power, did we um, provide water to them?
No, sir, um, one forty one was on their own generator. Power, um, Charleston was on there, which we're connected with Charleston, um. They were on their own generator power, fresh water one, we provide water to them, so. If women.
The quarter one that's on.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't open up, you're correct, we didn't open this, um, yeah, we did not open up any here to provide it.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, can you say that the lift station uh. Um, that was even back. Um, how do you, how do you know this over there? Um, because, and I'm just asking, is it over there in um, if I find y'all, whatever you know, that's like a. Vermin, that's what I'm mentioning, you care it well that, very kind of hot water. Um, they have the backup. And you don't get those calls, we just call, now, all we do is just pause. But this is something that, you know, I'm going to, it's under twenty dollars. I want to make, make me put a price, I'm looking at those over in uh, kind of, I mean, and. And basically on, and the main nurse, um, kind of, they, they like a cluster. But they're all kind of, you know, handling on this there.
Yeah, we've um, I was married with some of those lawyers, it's one of the I I, it's in there and um. In preparation of the water. Um, they just, and I know we just smoked personally, and we, we corrected a lot of those obstacles, um. Um, usually that, uh, before it was a lot, we, you know, even if it calls, it's kind of calm down. A lot has been done, some of the corrections out there, um. So when that happens, how we monitor, we're all, we're, we're not only at the plant, we go out, we get the lift station, we make sure. Because some of them don't have generators, so you have to depend on. You know, the power to come back on and maybe we need to get pumps or we need to get trucks to pull it out or even temporary generators. We can, we're always monitoring that, we need to, we need a generator and we'll, we'll plug into them and. You know, temporarily, I was probably the mountain man before I did that, but I was, that's what we would have done, but. And so levels were still there, the power is in, um. Pump started clicking in, they started going slow, slow out.
More questions?
I think, yeah.
Thank you.
Item seventy, discussion consideration of a possible action on the resolution for the new system. For the renewal of the M N B to the board members. John Jones, President Mary Dooley, Vice President Terry Bond, Secretary Daniel Robinson. Assistant Vice President Brian Pope, President Secretary, Dr. Annette Forward, who we have.
Who do you think that was? Did you understand that?
I'm told, told, yes, I'm told, yes.
I think most of the, uh, who's like more than what he. For more.
Oh, well, there's a many that. Um, we're probably, you know, same boat, second by Councilman Davey, all in favor, uh, all told. Not in the spirit.
Oh, I see.
Um. Yeah, yes. But can, can, can I, can I obtain a motion on uh, seventy? You know, but y'all just did not know it's got a baby for. I was giving a motion, but we didn't have it, but we didn't hear that. Now, I'm hearing the motion said.
But Mayor, uh, I would like to share with you that the M N B has been approved on June fourteen, twenty twenty three. For John Jones and Donnie Robinson to continue their capacity. With the term expiring June twentieth, twenty twenty six. And then the M N B also met on June twelve, twenty twenty four. Have been approved for Mary Yelling, Brian Pope, Terry Bond. To continue their capacity with their term expiring July twentieth, twenty twenty eight. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm waiting, I'm hoping on item seven.
No, I have a motion to uh, do the, the new of the, the board helping.
Good. Look at it, we made by here, so, um, second by Councilman Dunn, all in favor, uh, uh, all told. Most of them. Safe, flat, flat, and person.
Item eighty, discussion consideration of a possible action to approve a resolution. For the final flat of space, space on this. In the, in that general church of Andy Lawrence. Did a one point two eight four five paper. Situated in the magnitude of Florida, Thursday, extract number five, seven zero. And being out of a tall four point oh paper track. Of land as described by instrument, the volume, two forty, page five, zero, five. Of the records. Fort Bend County, Texas, Lawrence County, Columbia.
Good evening, everyone. Trust everybody made it through the storm because we're all here today and most of the probably have an actual. If not, it's kind of. Uh, we're here tonight to talk about St. Thomas Church. St. Thomas Church uh, is a. It's a one point two eight four five eight tract. This particular tract is located directly across the street from. Uh, they've come in and they've prepared a final flat. For their church, ultimately, at some point someday in the future. Uh, they'll build a church over on that plant. This is uh, pretty close to the street intersection. You can see it, I mean, literally, you walk back, you can see it over there. Um, they've gone through, uh, they've addressed all the comments that I've had as it relates to the southern flat. Placing your folk deismith along the lightways, on the folk building line. Uh, they do have to extend some temple structure. For them to get service for that track, uh, the church building, I think, oh, you know, you did that. Uh, thank, you know, seeing the owners there tonight. Very, uh, they, they've been there several times, I think everyone in California knows that. Uh. You know, they, they got a site plan in, they did not things that they have to do before they're able to release. Uh, be released, you know, join some in. But this is just one aspect of the building in front of your process. Most pieces of property that haven't been planted, we require them to be planted. One of the reasons why we require them to plant the property is. There's any encumbrances we need to place on the track, i.e. In this case, put a municipal, the code even along there. Uh, if this was on a future major thoroughfare or something like that. We want them to dedicate it so they don't kind of build anything that we have to go back and try to find that land. So this is just one step. Uh, the first step of a couple more that they'll have to go through. That is review the flat, uh, we make a recommendation to approve this flat right here. Uh, there are any questions, does anybody have a name as it relates to this particular flat?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The final passing, they require information about where they're going to get water and.
Yes, sir, so typically, when we're looking at these type of plans. Uh, we love to see, number one, where they're going to connect, how they're going to connect. And if they're going to ask next, we let them know. And if there's, you know, and that's why I've also asked them to put in the uh, ten foot municipal water source, drainage along the road. So yes, sir, I can't think of.
Uh, so it doesn't have to have anything to. Uh, handle all, I mean, see home water and sewer connection. But then these avenues.
They're going to get the building, they won't get the building.
Sometimes go to the building, turn the doctor's.
That is correct.
I follow, I'm.
Little question. And you're going to always know your question. Anybody, yeah, can I obtain a motion on the guy?
I might go over to him and just prove you that. And it's all like church, but.
Both of them are named by something A bar to assume these final facts, as they come to that government perch. And second by, something Dunn, all in favor, uh, all told.
Thank you.
Eighteen, discussion consideration of a possible action to approve a resolution for the final flat of. The facility home bro, development, eight subdivision of seventeen point eight four three, new home as the M N B flat. A part of lots forty two and forty three and all of the lots forty three, forty, I'm sorry, forty four, forty five and forty two. Each in New York and Texas Land Company, limited division and subdivision, then Fort Bend County, Texas. According to the map, our flat thereof found for record in volume. Twenty six, page five, ninety six, of the Fort Bend County, the representative commission, the manual, that's the latter. Verden, A dash, one, seven, zero, Fort Bend County, Texas. Seventy lots, two reserves, two blocks, eight, donkey, donkey, near.
And I actually talked to the leader, uh, in terms of, I think, the last people. And it turned over very nice to ordinate there and that. We didn't, if that is, they're here, I know, in correction for a rejection to the state office. Correction was name of the mayor and ma- name of the, the secretary that I was pointing to. With one direction. First correction was to show that, uh, reasonable, regulating boundary. As the intersection of the both road and the food meat pitch. That they are going to be moving, you know, as that. The third correction was. Show the five foot waterline event, they want to make a tenth of uh, side register right. Those three correction that you're going to make it and. This, this subdivision is seventeen point eight four three acres. And we are going to have a seventeen single family initiative lot. It has a two reserve, one reserve for retention and one, another reserve for the spending, uh, spending. And all the lots are more than five thousand cubic. Which the minimum point five feet of the lot. So any other question, I'd be very happy to. I have given the copy of the, that's what I'm developing, developed. And just give, give me very good start.
You know, but.
No, it's not, when you, when you go to make an ocean, you can't really, when you subject the conditions for community, you're all.
So, my, so, my. Can I, can we tell you the motive?
So, um, what, what was your idea? I'm sorry, the water that, that I mentioned.
This one is a water is connection on the port road, yes. From where, from the port road. Hmm. Water connection, then you from the port road. And uh, we have seventeen, it's in rock, it's that, so, uh, double up on the bed, that means for your. In that key, and also if I did, yes. So, I mean, you still have to pass and start from here, from the port. Is it going to come in still here and then I have, oh, this is for the, I call it.
That issue of that flat is that, the water connection, you mean, like, it's really interesting, if you show on the flat, if you have the water, it's in one of them.
So there is a, it's been about water line, you're speaking, uh, conscious, I've seen about the water connection.
I understand, I understand, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to tell you, you know, you got, for this particular. I understand, I understand, I, I'm, 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 for this particular flat, one of the corrections was that you need to show the use of that on the flat.
Yeah, there is, one part of that, yes.
And that's one of the corrections that you, so, so, it's not really dead, with, just like the other one, I mean, you talk about connectivity, connection, that'll happen to building products, then, but now all you're doing is improving flat, and, and, and one thing is the refreshing water, is that, is that sanitation, you know, you want, so it's, and, 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 if you want to change it, it's not true, it's not that, one of the conditions is you can't show that water, on flat, flat. The connections and capacity, all that, we keep, they're, 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 they're safe, we're not considering that on the flat, whatever, you're trying to.
Well, I think the city connection, when they come into the, uh, subdivision, the distribution line will be on the, and each individual, how to connect it from this, and that, one of the.
No questions? Marlon, can you mention on this item please?
I would, I would recommend, um, please, the mission, expect to do that.
I think I'm, 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 I'm,
Okay. So, motion has been made by Councilman Abar, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, all in favor? All opposed? The, the final flat, the, 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 the. Item nine, purchasing, nine A, discussion consideration of and possible action to approve a resolution for purchase, uh, of five accident bodies, cameras, from access in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars, since then, federal fund, police chief, are like. Okay, this, I need them for, I mean, you have, I mean, I believe nine body count, and now, it's not enough, so obviously, they're having to, well, take them, so where, actually, they gotta, we, so if I, you know, if my, you know, I, 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 one for everybody. And, can I, can I, can I, can I?
Fifty-five more, fifty-five more than every, we, we, that one?
Yes.
Well, I, 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 I,
Um. Oh, you said, oh, I, 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 I'm sorry. Um, motion has been made by Councilman Big, seconded by Councilman Dunn. No in favor? Uh, all opposed? No dissent. Item nine B, discussion consideration of the possible action to approve a resolution for purchase of six Motorola portable radios from Texas Communications, uh, brand in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars, twenty-six general fund, police chief, car, brand. You guys may have remember the, I think, you, 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 however, some of them, so some of, are obviously still using, you know, dairy radios, and they are still, and you can probably protect radios, when they're happening, as, as, as you know, mobile, so we will all have the same radio, we won't have the other company, you know, we have, you know, the, the, the.
From the same company, right? That was our last year?
Yes, ma'am, this is the company, well, this, last year was, 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 or, it's, it's, so, so, it's pretty curious. Can I take a moment, please?
I made the motion, we, um, purchased, um, six Motorola portable radios from Texas Communications, uh, brand, in the amount of thirty-one thousand four, uh, 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 uh.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, all in favor? Uh, all, all. No, we, we. You've got, now, item nine, C, discussion consideration of the possible action to approve a resolution for purchase of two portable, A S I D machines from Idenia, in the amount of five thousand, six hundred dollars, general fund, police chief, car, rider. And so these are agents, which means they're portable agents, so anytime you say, you know, they're agents, and then what an agent is, is, uh, finger identification system, so their finger twenty-six, so these are, um, we're active with two portable machines, because when offices are out on the street, and people don't identify, or you don't know who, who, which, it could be, it's, 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 it's,
Previously, we hadn't done.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't.
So also, do we have a thing, like, for the, uh, contract? Do we have, like, a personalized, or?
So we don't have a personalized, but we have, um, we have actually, um, three officers, so we have, uh, morning shift officer, uh, evening shift officer, and night shift officer, who have been certified, um, popular operators, so we don't have to wait on working hours, we just, we just, we just, those officers, we work fourteen times, we work, that, 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 and it's, that's, that's, so we're working on getting those, we, we, that, that, that.
So, uh, can I make one more thing? Possible action to approve a resolution and purchase of two Motorola A Ds, um, uh, Idenia, in the amount of five thousand to twenty dollars.
Motion was made by Councilmember Big, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, all in favor? All opposed? All opposed? No dissent. Item nine B, discussion consideration of the possible action to approve a resolution for purchase of a good two flat, flat, for reception area from absolute glass worth in the amount of nine thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars, mighty five, general fund, police chief, car, rider. And this is something that, and, 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 and,[1330.11]
have finished their best part and effort on trying to collect these that refers to our law firm. And we've been in the liquid collection process. There any questions out there? But there's a big continuation of renewal of the contract.
Do you have a question? President, President, I'm here on the, uh, on the back of the, uh, uh.
I'm not that, like, uh. I would just probably do a review of the contract, if any, now, first, Logan Blair and Stansfield. And we're supposed to approach the two years.
Those years they made by, we are supposed to, I know, second by Councilman McDonald, uh, Taylor, uh, all those.
Thank you very much.
I don't see these discussion considerations of the possible action to approve a resolution to institute an interlocal cooperation contract between the Department of Public Safety of the State of Texas D C S, I E O M E, Rosemary Bell, Court Administrator.
Good afternoon, Mayor, who's the opposing counsel. My name is Donnie Bell. Um, dear to the great community, but he's doing asking whatever it seems I don't. So we think how we're going to what I'm dealing with. So this is a complete renewal of the, um, the O M E, yeah, we already had a fight. Um, this is a local, we're missing O M E, D C S, the board. With keep in mind, we are in U S directions. The reason for this renewal is because D C S brings some politics that we're reviewing. In other words, uh, D C S provides the updated contract, contract, we already have the contract. So this is the renewal.
And may I ask, what they're doing? That's basically, they may know, what, 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 oh, the O M E? So O M E is a service that we, we, um, if someone goes to their sports, they have one. We send them, you can make D C S, the O M E does. And what it does is, um, they get denied the renewal of that purchase, uh, uh, drug license. And that drug license, we only, they not even renew it, we have individual, uh, to clear all the assets that, uh, that, uh, definitely satisfied. And then so we, make our line, they can be separate. So what's been saying to me, that only definitely. So we, um, so basically thirty, forty dollars, it said, like we said, uh, we had to set my O M E before I kept those five cities. They've got rid of that twenty dollars, uh, in your position. When we just, they hit at ten dollars. And we get four and O M E give us two thousand. So can I, can I move on to the next slide? I guess I'm not in the, uh, Paul George, new contact, and, uh, probably some history with several states to be here. And so, uh, still, uh. Those were made by Councilman McDonald, second, uh, uh, Councilman Santos. So it probably was a reason, all in favor, uh, all those. No, it's always easy.
I don't see this week, discussion consideration of the possible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Arco and to authorize you a warrant, uh, by engineering and service services contract to salute the for the City of Arco, City Hall, water plant, ground storage, tank, project, any amount of ninety seven thousand three hundred dollars. This is my comment. Mayor, Mayor, pardon. Hello, good evening.
I know, I'm pretty good, but everybody don't really remember. Good evening, everyone. Uh, here for you this evening to talk about your water plant. Uh, plan as you can see operates very well, but it's always about the fact. And right now, just to kind of give new and old uh, people sitting on the highest information. And I've talked to the mayor about this before. Uh, the plant currently right now is limited based on the ground storage tank and booster pump capacity. And so, and it's a timing thing too. You're running out of connections. And so to meet that demand, we need to add another ground storage tank, which has always been planned. Well, we initially put the plant there. The initial phase was put one two hundred eighty thousand gallon ground storage tank there. And then in the future, that other empty space you see over there would be the second ground storage tank again. We're also gonna add a, uh, one thousand fifty gallon per million booster pump on there. This will max out that plant. Uh, ultimately, when those two improvements are put into place, you'll be able to have an ultimate capacity of two thousand connections. Uh, that should take you all out. Uh, it'll take out a little bit, little bit of weight, I think. The timing on this is normally they put plans together, plan's gotta be submitted to D C to D C to take submission on environmental parties. Uh, D C to approve them, they also blow out the business on it, and then they have to construct it. That whole process is gonna take you anywhere from, uh, eighteen to twenty-four months for all of that to happen right here. And so, uh, tonight we have to avoid you, just the engineering component of this project, this phase of the project. And, uh, I'll entertain any questions anybody has with me. This is water only.
You see the same, I'm sorry.
That's all.
You have a company more connected than this.
So this will give you ultimately two thousand connections. And the limiting factor why it's two thousand, it taps out right there, is your water will. Your water will is the most important part of anything as it relates to a water plant. And while we're talking earlier about interconnects and, and them running out of power, well, everybody's gonna have water system, gotta have a generator, that's just part of it. The only time that interconnect really gets open, not when the power cuts off, it's when the well doesn't act right. That, I mean, that, that's really it. Everything else you can fix, you can put a bandage on it, you can do, you know, lots of things. When that well mess up, that is the critical piece right there. And so that's why, you know, they didn't have it all, they, uh, doesn't matter we got, we got it anyway, they're that guy.
What you said, okay, two years?
Eighteen, eighteen, twenty-four months, starting right with the grave.
Okay, now you see, we reached that two thousand, we didn't, we would have to put like another.
No, so when we reach, when we max out at that two thousand, we're gonna be drilling another well.
Yes, we're gonna, and you know, another well, I'm sorry.
Yes, we'll be drilling another well, putting in another ground state. We're basically gonna have another water plant. Yeah. So that's gonna be happening in this plane. And, I mean, you know, and here's what I tell all of the smaller communities like this that are vibrant and growing. It's gonna happen. You can draw all you will, not gonna, it's gonna happen.
Yes, sir.
It is here, you just look down the road. As you come down the road, you see between now, where you sit, the two major highways. You have the Fort Benne Pole Road, that's right over there, you got five twenty-one right here, you got two eighty-eight. We all go between those streets right there, you got Major H E B there, right down the corner. I mean, so the vote is there, it's happening. Not gonna slow down, it's not gonna go anywhere. So what you wanna do in the community is be prepared and have control of your destiny.
And what you do is bring our colonies, like, uh, running.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Now, I understand most of them on this item.
I am making a mention as we approve the one year, I mean, we're giving, uh, giving, uh, thanks to the D C S is for the City of Arco, City Hall, water tank now storing ten projects. He and I, and I'm sure the town is giving that, very fast.
Logan, as we made by Councilman McDonald, second by Councilman David, uh, all those. I'm going to stand.
Thank you very much.
Item eleven, art mixes. Eleven eight, discussion consideration of the possible actions on, and artists of the City of Arco Texas may be general funders for the fiscal year beginning October the first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September the third, year twenty twenty-four to include five full-time positions and one part-time position and transfer of money between the general pledges not exceeding the full fiscal year budget. Looping tables, five minutes, double digits.
Mayor and Council, I mentioned earlier that Ricky was willing to be here, but I just wanna share with you that this budget year has been incredible. We have this, each of the council members, they had very good questions and, um, we believe that it's a good working, uh, session that we're going to continue to leave and offer. And, and please narrate any time you've been asked to meet with us, and we'll go over any questions you have. But typically, we can't simply cancel it after six months, and we call it budget implementation. So we were unable to do that this before you. So we're just, I'm limiting the budget. And then we will come back once the votes have been closed for F I four, we'll bring that budget back to the department. We ask for your support. I've mentioned in the ordinance front, there are five positions. And, uh, five, five, I should say, four for the police department, one is for the administration, and one is for municipal courts. The municipal court position is a part-time position, and it will be funded directly from an account vault surrender. So there's no budget impact because the money is collected from municipal court. But we are exceeding the number M T E that was originally brought to me, so that's fine. I'll entertain any questions if you want.
Now, most of them are right.
My, my family is briefly, wasn't it? How many of the general ledgers adding five full-time positions, but one part-time, pretty intense. Transferring the money between many of our, uh, through, we can stream the, pretty, 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 uh, important.
First, and then made by Councilman Avar, second by Councilman Dunn, all in favor, uh, all those. Item eleven B, discussion consideration of the possible action on that partner of the city council of the City of Arco Texas adopting regulations for a special expense to be collected by the municipal court for the use and service of a warrant of progress for the event, uh, violation of an oath in under section thirty-eight point ten of the Texas Channel Code or section five point three four zero zero nine of the Texas Transportation Code, providing for fuel, providing for availability, and providing an effective date. Rosemary Bell, Court Administrator. Any questions beyond your order? One is the next one. So this order will allow the city to recover costs of those events, the parts, uh, progress for those of years, five times a year. With a twenty-four five dollar payment access in this revenue, we represent standing to the general fund. And we'll hope to put the general fund, so that, since we can break it, you know, this time, we can unpack it a while back ago. So I think we'll bring the benefit for it, for it. So, and I'm, I'm, so the city, uh, uh, yeah, we'll be, we'll be, that, it'll probably bring about forty thousand dollars a year.
You know, people don't, don't, they don't, they're, they're, it's a warrant.
That's right, if it's supposed to be here, I'm, it's here, it's pending. There's a lot of things that I've told you. Yeah, it's a fee to use it for whatever reason, the cost that we're dealing with.
I think a motion, no reading, but, but, uh, special expense to be posted on the next post. Three, two, one, of the, uh, part of the sentence.
Probably has been made by Councilman Avar, second by, we are supposed to, Santos, all in favor, uh, all those. I'm going to move on to the next one. Thank you, Governor. Item eleven C, discussion consideration of the possible action on, and partners of the city council of the City of Arco Texas, adopting permanent expenses, fee for permanent relations to the person or developing, providing for fuel, providing for availability, and providing an effective date. Limitedary term management.
So, uh, Mayor and Counsel, um, hoping, um, I don't know, usually, that the score is based on, uh, the, I mean, everybody having faced some, uh, three and then we start, uh, one of those things with that, we would issue a, uh, building permit or construction or development, uh, we'd be residential six months, and even, um, we're not showing it here. Um, in the event that that permit is, in timeframe.
I mean, it's what?
In the event that that permit expires on that timeframe that we've given, um, we offer an extension. And with that extension, we ask them to pay half of the original permit fee minus any of the, uh, 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 plan or you can, in the search of the we don't ask that we, strictly go on the amount of permitting package. So we have taken the store, we're doing that here, but we have not had anything to that as, uh, as a word, ask before, thank you.